The regular Rev. City Council meeting scheduled for April 4th, 2023 at 5:00 PM will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Rousey.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Visalovic.
Here.
Approval of minutes, City Council meeting, March 21st, 2023. Anybody have any questions or changes? If not, I'll just call for a motion and we approve those minutes. So, motion made by Rousey, we have support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of tonight's agenda.
You'll note that I handed out a couple of things to you folks.
Yeah.
For the whole leasing plan, that includes a purchase order for us to sign if you approve it, and then the resolution, which approves the entering into a lease agreement once the equipment is delivered.
No one has any questions, I'll call for a motion and we approve tonight's agenda as it stands.
One request, Mayor, I'm wondering if we might consider authorizing the police chief to call for applications for the position of sergeant once the position is vacant. Get the ball rolling on that.
Yeah.
With our current staff. We could add that somewhere, I'd appreciate it.
What if we just add that to number eight, request to hire a patrol officer there? Any other changes or questions? If not, I'll call for a motion and we approve the agenda with the change of item number eight.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have support.
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no appointments or presentations. And the consent agenda is the approval of claims for March 2023. If no one has any questions on any of those items, call for a motion and we approve the claims. So, motion made by Rousey, we have support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings at this time, no unfinished business. So, we will jump into new business. Item number one, closed session for labor negotiations pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D on 3/1. I need a motion from the City Council to go into closed session for labor negotiations pursuant to this statute.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. At this point, I will suspend the regular council meeting. And we will go into closed session, I will reconvene the meeting after the closed session. Okay, okay, at this point, I will reconvene the regular City Council meeting. And we'll go into item number two, which is reflected on the closed session. Motion and we approve City Council action regarding new business from item one.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, memorandum of understanding by the, between the City of Evolith and Ask Me Local 484, memorandum of understanding between the City of Evolith and Law Enforcement Labor Services, Police Officers Local 20, and United Steel Workers and City Administrator Meet Two provisions. Anybody have any questions? I know, uh, made an adjustment, adjustment here with all the costs and everything to retain the employees we have, which we're fortunate for the hours we gotta put in this year, overtime. Anyone have any questions on that? Call for a motion and we approve this memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, authorize city engineer to proceed with plans and specs for fail pond, north and west trail reconstruction. Mark, you got anything you would help to add to that?
I don't have anything, I just kind of heard the trails up down there, you know? I was just having Alan outside there, move over down there, do a little research to figure out, because I know that west side is for the east side, I know where it's gonna be getting done this spring, but you're one of the most populous in that one.
I think so, because for the amount of traffic you get though.
It's, it's a busy place down there.
You get a heavy rain to some of the, you know, sanctuary.
That one side is always underwater, that east side.
Yeah.
I got a question, when is spring? When is spring?
It was last month, wasn't it?
Trying to first day of spring, close my eyes and boom.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, a call for a motion and we authorize the city engineer to proceed with plans for fail pond, north and west trail reconstruction.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number five, consider authorizing the city engineer to prepare bid package for 2024 AMI Advanced Metering Infrastructure.
Metering. I do have a quick handbook for you, Mayor. So, this is just a real preliminary budget sheet, and then Jerry had reached out to a couple, trying to just develop a budget at this point. A couple of quotes from Hornman and metering and technology. And you can see there's a wide range of pricing for this type of metering. So, this is like contactless metering for the water meters. And right now, we're just trying to get a budget put together for this, to get it on the project priority list, intended use plan, as a potential source of funds for next year. Some of these things were, if we find out they take some time to get an order in, that's why we'd wanna maybe go out for bids sooner than later. So, getting a plan and spec ready, a bid package ready during the year here, and get it ready to go out for bids later this fall potentially.
Well, we're not gonna tell when you get a formal bid, we're not gonna have any hard numbers to work with.
Correct. So, this is just to kind of give a sense of what this project could be, or potential cost, I guess.
Potential cost versus, the potential cost versus what we're going through now by having our same antiquated meter system, where each resident writes down, is there a cost saving someplace in there?
Um, so right now, this, this'll give accurate reading, this would report back to a central location, like a, a public utilities computer system. It, it would report usage, you could see if there's a big change on a meter. Comes with a networking package to watch stuff a lot closer, it's more, it's where a lot of us metering is, a lot of electrical companies are using these for electric meters, where they don't wanna come and read the meters anymore.
Gas companies.
So, it does, yeah, gas companies, they're all, it's kind of a technology where meter readings headed.
How many customers that we have don't turn in a reading, what percent? Some people got a hard time understanding that too.
Seen it.
Well, and some people, we encourage them to put, you know, automated meter readers in. You know, I'm conscious, I don't know the percentage, but what happens, a lot of people, they don't read their meter. So, they give an estimate fee, and then when they do read their meter, and it catches up with them, it goes huge. Out of control. And then, I don't know if Michael's gonna say this, but, you know, Jerry has to do all these water reports. And so, this is really gonna help him with the water reports, to figure out where's the water going, how much are we treating, how much are we moving the meters, where's the gap, is there a leak? Because if you remember, some years ago, we found some leak, I think on the way to like UTEC.
Yeah, it was one up.
Yeah, yeah.
And it almost went out.
So that, this will help with that, managing where's the water, doing the reports.
A lot of the other thing is, a lot of people complain about their bill or whatever is so high, about how they jump, and a lot of times, it's just as simple as a toilet running or whatever. Try to go in there and show them, your reader's still moving, so there's something running. But this way, they'll be able to go right onto the computer, look at it at the same time. You'll be able to say, well, you have something running in your house. I mean, kind of solid right from there, instead of going to the residence and inspecting it and stuff. Kind of causing a, well, helping save money out of it, I guess.
Well, the technology thing allows you to utilize manpower in a more effective way too, when you figure it out. Where do I have guys checking on meters? What do you do, you guys stop, because you don't.
It's always nice to have someone who's in control.
And somebody's house, especially the rental, you don't know what you're gonna find in those places.
So, this, we're gonna have an employee go around to each individual residence and business? With this meter, this meter reader, or how's that work?
No, so there's two different types, one is like called an EMR, where there's an antenna coming off the meter, and yeah, the, an employer or meter reader would go around town and pick up them readings once a month from each neighborhood. This is AMI, where it's a networked meter reading, where it'd report back to the network, like a, a public utilities laptop would essentially have a software that tells it, hey, I wanna read this address, or I wanna collect all of the meter readings on this particular day, and, and that's when it would bill out from, so it'd help with the billing as well. And like Mark was saying, it'd help track usage at any particular residence, if, if there's a discrepancy in billing, or anything like that. But it saves more manpower too, is there's not that physically going to the meter or going into a neighborhood to read them, unless there's an issue, then you'd maybe go troubleshoot it, but.
Any accuracy?
Yeah, they're, same as physically reading it, you're gonna get a real-time reading off that meter, because that's, they're fairly accurate.
Greg, do you have a problem where Michelle had, or was related to this, had to manually enter a bunch of data?
Oh, that's what she does, so when you fill out your slip, and you sign your payment, you're in your reader, that's a manual entry.
Yeah, so there's.
Yep.
It saves employee time.
Yeah, so probably got that much more time to free somebody up to do other things.
We do have that AMR technology now with the radio, so people can sign up for that if they want to install it. So, once a month, we'll go around and, however many households have that, we'll go around with a iPad or whatever, and take down their information if it reads for them every month.
I think this might qualify for some grants, I mean, from a conservation standpoint. You know, we're diligent about the water you're using.
Well, absolutely, I would think, I would hope we could get some.
That's what I'm thinking, but I think we gotta take the step and get, get everything else, we get some hard numbers, get a bid package out there, then we'll all step the top.
Yep, I agree.
No one has any more discussion, a call for motion that we authorize a city engineer to prepare a bid package? Motion made by Lillis, we have support.
Support.
Worked by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number six. Consider John Deere 622 GP motor grader lease options. I guess that is probably our, our mainstay around this town for snowstorm's market.
It would be very nice to have.
What, hold is the other one?
It's 1983, I think. Somewhere 83, 84, somewhere, somewhere there. And this one's gonna be a little bit bigger, not much, but, you know, trying to get as close to the same size we have, but. It's gonna have more power.
Four-wheel drive too, isn't it?
Yes, so it's not gonna be spinning, we won't need the chains on the tires, which we always have problems with those coming off and flying around, so, uh, the guys will really, really, really like it. They'll do a much better job of it.
Well, you know, if we get a winner like hell like this one.
Yeah.
We'd have two of them.
We would have.
We'd have the old one yet to go.
And it would be nice to even have the second one for maybe over in West Evolith, we need to.
Send the one up that way and keep it in town while you're doing streets.
Well, we got some pretty capable operators, and you know, it's, you need some good equipment. I hate junk, especially when you get a snowstorm, you know?
I don't know, when Mokas left, I was kinda leery, but no light posts to unfound this year, and I'll tell you, they did a damn fine job.
They did a very good job, yes.
This, the grader, it's, uh, is it equipped with a wing or no wings?
It has a wing.
It has a wing?
Yeah. And, uh, the wing, and I think it's.
I didn't know.
Probably a delay to.
Yeah, we have to afterwards.
Okay.
Do you think 54-month lease is appropriate lease period?
I believe so, yeah. Anybody else have any questions on that? Because I, I think that's from McCoy, right?
Yes, and then, you know, anything goes wrong with it or major, I mean, they'll come, since it's under warranty or lease, they'll come and fix it, I mean, unless we.
That's the main.
Do something ourselves to it or something, I mean.
Other than wear, I don't like tires. We should be in good shape there. Anybody else have any questions, or Mark, or anything? Well, we got the, looks like the best known, the best term that fits our needs is from McCoy. Call for a motion that we accept this quotation from McCoy. Lease options, so moved. Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Could you folks approve the purchase order? First of all, the purchase order is we sign it, we give it to the dealer, he orders it, okay? And then the second item I gave you was the resolution that is going to approve us to sign all the lease documents once the equipment arrives sooner than later.
Do I amend my motion to approve those two items? I amend my motion.
Would you amend yours? Who, who seconded it?
I did, I'll amend mine also.
Any further discussion on the amendments? Call for motion that we approve this, purchase a resolution with those commandments. So moved. You need a second on that? Because.
I think they already amended it.
Oh, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Oh, one item here. Okay, item number six. Tough one to deal with, we got resignation from Officer Meline. He's taking another position somewhere else. Sergeant Meline, and I'll tell you what, he's been here a long time, a lot of experience in this city. I really hate to see him go, but I wish him the best, you know, because you gotta take care of yourself. If no one else has any questions, I'd like to call for a motion that we accept Officer Meline's resignation, and send him a letter of thanks for his years of service in the city.
I'd make that motion, I'd just like to comment, just if you're listening, thank you very much for your services. You've been an outstanding officer for the City of Evolith for all these years. I wish you the best as we go forward. Sad to see you leave.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a, a big hole to fill with Meline, so.
I would like to second that motion and add on that. Me and Sarge had quite a few adventures over the last four years together. And his cool head and professionalism always prevailed. It was a pleasure working with him, and I was shocked when I saw this letter, and I do have a heavy heart, because he was, he was very good for this town.
Yes, he was.
And we're losing a good guy there, but don't let it go in your head.
I mean, that's why we're dealing with the other subject for situations like this.
But I'll second that.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, is request to hire a patrol officer. And Ryan, what was that, to override the chief, promote, submit to sergeant, or open?
Correct, uh, you just authorize the chief to post for the position of sergeant once the position is vacated. He has to post internally for seven days.
We got a motion, we have a support.
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Quotes for city hall and police re-roof. Hard figure, why we wanna do something like that, eh?
Is that paid together? Okay.
We got two different contractors.
Yeah, and so Katie Hildebrand from ARI had estimated that the roof replacement was gonna be around $100,000. And as you can see, the low quote is 118,234. And the good news is, this will get done sooner than later. The whole goal is to get it done before the snow falls again after all this melts.
And I have a question.
Yep.
What kind of warranty are we gonna get with this? Because to fork out $100,000, we got the same problem up at The Rock. You know, within a year, it starts leaking. So, I mean, I wanna know what kind of warranty we get off of this for that type of money.
I'm gonna have to maybe ask Alan if he has some idea. There's always a minimal, like a year's warranty, but I gotta believe.
So it'd be.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'd almost refer to Joel a little bit too, but I'll just say a typical contract language, it depends on what's in the contract, and how the contract's set up. Would be the add a year from the date of completion. Sometimes it can be two years though, for specialty products, or I haven't seen them where they go beyond two, like a two-year.
And I know a flat roof is tough, I mean, that's always tough, but.
Unless there's a product warranty, like if it's an EPDM-type roof, and it has a 25-year warranty, the labor would not be included on that typically, it'd just be a material. And it, we'd have to look at the product.
I just think we should just take a look at it, and at least have a warranty for one year, because we don't want Joel to be soaking wet down there after a year. Or a hand on it.
So, without seeing the contract, it's hard to guess, but one year maybe possible, okay.
These the only quotes we got?
Correct.
Okay. It's everybody's pleasure, and you wanna go with these quotes? Ball will start to roll, because you probably aren't gonna get any less if you wait.
And this is gonna get just worse if we let it go, it's gonna start leaking somewhere into here, and who knows if we got black mold or anything.
There'll be a bucket in front of each one of us.
Yeah. And we'll be on a telephone interview from Florida.
Well, does somebody wanna make a motion that we accept these two quotes?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have support.
So, I'll support, is this for the Nelson Roof Incorporated for 118,234?
Yes.
Okay, I'll support that, and I would just like to know what warranty.
About the range corners, are we including that too? In this motion, or we have a separate?
No, no, that was the, that was, their bid was 168,000 to do the roof, we're taking a little bid.
Well, we've got, that's for the city hall and the police. Oh, you got there, two separate quotes, that's what it's called.
No.
Oh, okay.
And that's a big difference.
I guess.
50K.
And you made the motion, Joe, do we have a support?
Yeah, I was moved and supported.
You get this? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Oh man, we're abusing night tonight, I'll tell you that. Item 10. Go into closed session. Discuss, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real personal property. And this is closed session as in pursuit of the Minnesota statute 13D, point 05 subdivision. It includes, we discussing the sale of city-owned vacant land located on a northeast corner of intersection 37 and station 44 road.
So, Mayor, I wondered if you wanted to, like, sometimes we do, we move ahead to these items, and then we come back for the closed session, so that everybody can. Yeah, go instead of waiting for us, that's not you?
Oh, go through the, well, we can do that.
Okay.
Anybody have any board or liaison updates, committee reports?
We had a park commission meeting here last week, and the first installments for getting your spot at Betts' Park are due March 1st. We're filling up fast, from what I understand. We are going ahead with the electrical pedestal to install there at Northside Rank to give them a little extra power for decorated lights and any, anything else we wanna do out there. This golf course, the maintenance is gonna be taken over by one of the board commission members. We're working with Jerry to work out the details on that. There's a letter gone out for the help clean the dog park after the, that snow melts. We, we were proposing some, to purchase some new picnic tables for Betts' Park. Some that are handicapped and accessible. We discussed it, we were approached by the Evolith Foundation to put in, ask for a grant. Quite frankly, the grant process was tougher to do there than it was to get bids for a new road going through town. And the date changed on, on Jerry's timeline there, and with the monies that we have, we figured we'd purchase one or two tables on our own, rather than go through that general application, we thanked the foundation for considering us for that, but it just seems like a lot more work than was needed for a couple picnic tables. That was just about it, be looking for maybe some improvements to our Christmas decorations down there in the near future, so keep that in mind. And that was it for us.
Anybody else have any committee reports or anything?
We had a EDA meeting that was actually before the council meeting this time. And it was short and sweet, most of the work had been done in a prior meeting. And it was to go over and put out for bids the revised plans for the pocket park downtown. And it'll be done more in stages than in one shot to make it more affordable. And really, when no one had any questions or any more input, and it was unanimously passed to go for bids. So, that's the step we're at there. We can always improve and add on in the years ahead as we acquire more funding for such an adventure.
Oh, and also during our commission meeting, we had a citizen come up. She was wondering why the City of Evolith can't do more with the parks as far as having entertainment and stuff when out there, have an artist, an artistic fair, including musicians, and get local artists to come out and do something in one of our parks. We're looking at that, trying to find suitable options for us to, to do that area as to where we can have parking and stuff like that. But most of the park commission members all agree that there's, you know, we have one thing going in this town, and that's the 4th of July, we thought maybe we could get something else going on throughout the, maybe something else throughout the year, maybe in the wintertime, or, or something, to have something going on, and this lady came forward, and I would appreciate her coming forward at the meeting and trying to get something. and trying to get something started in town. If we're going to make this town what we hope it to be, that would be something that we could work on, so.
Remember the Slav picnic days?
Yeah, you know, everybody else, every other town has something, you know, which is a mess fire days.
Well, we tried.
Lily has three things going on.
Hockey days a number of years ago, I think it only lasted a couple of years, but you know, we need a committee where you take an interest in doing it, because if we don't have a committee from the public, we got no need to help because we don't have the staff to do that.
No, and that, and that, it's going to, it's going to require volunteers and the commission realizes that.
Yeah, then if you get, you know, a committee like that, then you could always help them.
You know, look what they did with the car show. That started out and that's huge.
Yeah. Maybe we could even combine it with that.
You never know. Yeah, that's true. Isn't there, off the lake part, don't they have a craft show there?
They do, in September. I believe it's in September, I'm not really sure.
Two of those, that's a pretty nice south pool, you got the pavilion's pool and other areas there, get a good meeting.
But you know, it's not spread out, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Not as well known as some of these other things and we think that we should have something going on there.
Get some poker days or something on a Sunday afternoon at the pavilion.
There you go. Hit the Slav date back. You could. Our all nations day if you want it, but it doesn't matter to me.
Anybody else in the council have anything to bring up? If not, the chief, you got anything else?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Mark?
Nothing, Mayor.
Alan, you got anything else for us?
Just one quick update, I did meet with MINDOT last week on the slip ramp. That was going to be reviewed now by the MINDOT Geometrics, I believe in St. Paul, Minneapolis, St. Paul. And they're going to hopefully get back, they didn't have a timeframe on that, but they thought it would be fairly quick turnaround and that would be more of getting us a final approval on what can actually be built there, so.
Okay.
All, more to come on that and I'll kind of keep you guys in the loop and Jerry and staff as well, so.
That was, that was, they were looking at some, making some changes to the original plan there, is that what it was?
Yes, so I had to go to Geo, they had concerns, the biggest concern I guess that I heard was lights shining out onto the highway from coming off a hat trick at that ramp area. It could cause some confusion or distraction and so they were looking at geometrically how it could be modified slightly to fit your guys' needs and MINDOT's needs, so.
I think they'll figure something out.
Yep.
For that. Steph, you got anything to add?
I don't have anything.
Jackie, anything else?
Thank you.
Joel?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Since we have no one else in the audience, I think they will jump back to item 10 and I will suspend the regular council meeting and go into closed session.